Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodium Moore's Pardium, Antae, Colorado. The acronym is AMPAC, I am the Chief Judge of Consular Court. Today is Class 36. Class 36. What did we learn in Class 35? Well, we started learning a little bit more about what's called Admiralty Law and charters, 501(c)(3), which are all branded under what you call feudal law. Admiralty Law goes back to feudal law, we started learning that. And feudal law goes back to Roman law. And Roman law goes back to both the British and the Vatican under Unum Sanctum policies. So, when we start talking about Admiralty Law and charters and 501(c)(3), there's actually not necessarily something wrong with that, it just depends on how you're using it. It's like the definition of black. There's nothing wrong with the word "black", but if you're using the word "black" to brand a people, then that's what you call connotative linguistics. That's what you call a misnomer. That's what you call birthright theft. There's nothing wrong with the word "black", you can say a black tire, well, it is a black tire, that is a fact. But the word "black", depending on how you use it, can be something used as a negative spell or a positive means of how you're using it, right? So let's understand that when we start talking about charters, we start talking about Admiralty, we start talking about 501(c)(3), these things all have a purpose in life. But the question is, how were you using it? What is the intent behind it? And thus the reason why AMPAC Study Sessions exists, so that way we can start pointing out the distinction between these things, that way Moors are cognizant of how these words are being used and the intent behind these words, right? So, as we continue on, like I already told the Moors, you know, as we know today is Class 36, we were talking about in previous classes, we started talking about warranties and the KIBE and the JAB and how you use the three branches of government. Like I said, we're going to pause on that, we're going to get back to it, especially to our subscribers. We'll get back to learning how to put liens on the collars. I promise you, we'll get back to that. But as of right now, we're going to take at least one or two more classes to talk about the Constitution, because we're excited, because AMPAC put our Constitution on the record, for the record, for all Moors to come in, examine, and qualify, and have questions about the Constitution. Why does AMPAC have our Constitution public? It's because we're following well-settled principles of law, international law. We're obligated to have it as public law, it's birthright. AMPAC Study Sessions is all about sharing well-settled principles. Our well-settled principles that we share is not AMPAC's concept, it's well-settled principles that we share with other Moors, because other Moors are entitled to the birthright of knowledge, right? So always remember that when AMPAC has its classes, our classes are not about Patreon, our classes are not about cash apps, we're not interested in your Federal Reserve note, and we're not interested in your silver coin. We basically want to share information, because this is a team effort that Moors have to put together an alliance and come together and restore our states, right? What are we restoring? We're restoring the Iroquois Confederation. The Iroquois Confederation are the original constitutions that were set forth amongst Moors before the collars came in and conquered the Moors. So we're getting back, we're restoring, right? It's a restoration of our lost state. We are conquered people that now have to now start following well-settled principles and instructions of international law if in fact we want our states back through the states. So like I said, AMPAC is here to be a beacon of light to just basically share information, birthright information that's not for sale. Alright, let's go ahead and jump in, alright? So, today we'll continue on with the same subject matter of understanding Constitution, statehood, and why it's important to follow well-settled principles, understanding international law. Moors have to start studying international law, alright? So we're going to get more into that today. That way, Moors will start now pivoting towards studying international law. I'll say it again. Moors have to stop studying local, municipal, corporation, state statutes, policies, codes, and ordinances. What do we need to study? We need to study our own Moors Constitution and enforce your Constitution based upon your permanent jurisdiction, then enforce the treaties, and when you have a dispute, then you use Consular Court. When Consular Court does not prevail, what's next? Now you petition the United Nations to bring in the United Nations Secretary General and then maybe even the International Court of Justice, the ICJ, that's in the Netherlands, that hey, alright? So let's jump back in and keep talking about this, okay, Moors? Alright. So as you can see, Moors, we've got our website up here, Alodium Moore's Pardium, Antae, Colorado. Moors, please go by and take a look at it. It's all about understanding our Constitution. Like I said, we got a tab for accession to the Contract, we went over that briefly. And a pathway to nationality. Like I said, our Minister for Foreign Affairs will talk to you more about that. Just reach out to info@ampag.gov.org if in fact you want to learn more about statehood, alright? Okay, let's move on. Okay, Moors. As we talked about last time, this is AMPAC's Constitution. That's our sovereign seal, Alodium Moore's Pardium, Antae, Colorado. The law of restoration, posteminium per consanguine, alright? So, I know we went over this last time, but like I said, what's one of the most important things about a Constitution that Moors need to understand? You've got the preamble, right? But what's the most important part about a Constitution? It's the word "dominion". The word "dominion". The word "dominion" outlines your permanent latitude, longitude. I cannot stress this enough for Moors to understand. According to international law, you must have your concrete evidence, material fact, your exhibit, your state of fact is outlining your dominion, your latitude, longitude of your land, alright? The alodium land, that's very important, Moors, to understand. Dominion, okay? That's probably one of the most important things in your Constitution, alright? As we talked about last time, accession to contracts. We're going to add a little bit more today. Like I said, our Minister for Foreign Affairs are really going to the details. Today we'll just hit some more highlights as it relates to international law. Like I said, Moors, Moors cannot enforce treaties, declarations, conventions, or the Charter of the United Nations without acceding to those contracts. We'll learn some more about that today, okay? As I always open up, I always talk about the mission and vision statement, "to restore the United States of Morocco". We're restoring what was already in place, back to its pristine, original condition, which is our Moors states, okay? Let's continue. What are we restoring? Morocco, okay? Morocco. It's always been Morocco, and it always will be Morocco. But as we know, because of capitulation and because of what Tajri Bey talks about all the time, which is animal husbandry, now the United States is claiming a jurisdiction over Morocco such as an overlay, right? So we learned about this. Now we know that now, AMPAC is now claiming the latitude, longitude of this part and parcel land within the Moroccan Empire, right? The North Gate, okay? We're learning about that, we're learning statehood. Now, here's something very important I want to share with the Moors. This is a quote by Nobu Dua Lee. "This is not no social organization, it is a divine and national movement. By you being born here, don't make you a citizen." Look what I have on. Now, this was handed to me by the government. It represents the royal prince, Nobu Dua Lee. Now, let's break this down, because it's in three parts, okay? The first part. "This is not no social organization, it is a divine and, 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 national movement." What is Nobu Dua Lee trying to tell us? He's trying to tell us divine, what is divine? Divine is we have to reach back, understanding the history of our ancient mothers and fathers. That's divine, reaching back, understanding law and history. How will we conquer? Where did we fall? And how do we rise? Okay, how do you rise? This is the "and", "and", "national movement". It's a two-part equation. Divine, reach back. Now you're bringing it forward to the present. And what you do in the present sets up the future. But you must have mobility. It must be movement. But movement can't be a false movement. Moors can't be on a treadmill, treadmill thinking that is what you call motion. That's not forward motion. That's de facto. It's a falsehood. We must have forward motion, so what's happening? It is not no social organization, not a social organization. It's about taking care of what? Our obligation to our mothers and fathers, to bring us back into the consciousness of nationality and what? Running governments again. It is a divine and national movement. So here's where the other half that hasn't been told, which is the national movement. Nationality, if you're talking nationality, that means you're talking government. If you're talking government, that means you're talking Constitution. If you're talking Constitution, you're talking state. If you're talking state, now you're enforcing what's called your permanent jurisdiction and all the bylaws and all the departments that come along with your government. So now, what is AMPAC trying to do? Which is trying to be a beacon to start talking about their "and". Moors have been studying divine for over 100 years and more. It's time to move forward. Movement, 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 movement of what? Our national movement. Instead of being on a treadmill, it's time to move forward, Moors. Let's go into the second section. "By you being born here, don't make you a citizen", Nobu Dua Lee. Wait a minute. What is Nobu Dua Lee talking about? He's talking about two separate jurisdictions. You got to understand, when Nobu Dua Lee came here, he was just trying to get the Moors back to ground zero. When Nobu Dua Lee came, the Moors were all stuck in what's called animal husbandry. The Moors were walking around on all fours thinking they were citizens, thinking they were chattel, sheeple, under the definition of what's called "human". Moors need to look it up, especially young Moors. Look up the definition of "human", "human" is an adjective. When you look it up, it's going to say you're just one step above an animal. Now, what you will look up what's called a definition of "human being", which is a noun. What does it say? Development of superior mental development, articulate speech, and upright stance. That's human being, noun. So therefore, you go from an animal husbandry status and now you're standing up on your two feet, standing on your square, under human being, noun. You're no longer dealing with animal husbandry. Animal husbandry is all about being on all fours. Adjective, okay? That's what Moors have to understand. So watch this. What is Nobu Dua Lee talking about? This is called capitulation regime. When Moors undertakest acquiescence or just plain no acquiescence, when Moors agree to be citizens of the United States, naturalized citizens, then you have now by your own self-determination, because man know thyself, you must know who you are. And when you don't know who you are, you immediately think you're a citizen. That's called capitulation regime. So Nobu Dua Lee was pointing out the fact that's two separate jurisdictions. You got to understand, when Nobu Dua Lee came on the scene, the Moors thought they were citizens of the United States. So he started waking them up. How did he wake them up? He had to give them examples, watch this. "Look what I have on", what did he have on? "Moors garb". He's trying to let them know, "when you study this Moors garb, turbans and fezzes, you're going to start going back to divine and understand who your ancient mothers and fathers are based upon just the wardrobe itself. The apparel he was wearing was bringing the Moors back into consciousness. Man, that's how we used to dress? Once you study that, you start understanding what is Moors garb all about." Then what did he say? "Now, this was handed to me by the government", what government? Didn't Nobu Dua Lee say he learned from the Egyptians? The Egyptian government? The Egyptians taught Nobu Dua Lee along with some other teachers that he had? A government brought him back into the consciousness. They handed him back his turban. They handed him back his fez. They handed him back his Moors garb. Then he came back to North America, i.e. the North Gate, to share that information with Moors who were still under the animal husbandry and still dealing with indoctrination. That's why he's telling them, "you're not a citizen unless you want to be a citizen, but if you want to be a Moor, you got to study, study, study." And that's what this is all about. It represents what? It represents the royal prince. He was trying to tell the Moors about royalty. That we at one time ran the planet, matriarchal, along with her sons, in combination, ran the planet. So you got to understand, even Nobu Dua Lee said, "we're not citizens unless you decide to be a citizen under capitulation, under tacit acquiescence, or plain no acquiescence." That must be understood from Nobu Dua Lee. We are not citizens of the United States, and we're not citizens of Morocco. Okay. This is Article 15 of the Treaty of Madrid, year 1880. We talked about this a lot. But this is what Nobu Dua Lee was trying to point out. Remember now, Nobu Dua Lee was born around what? 1886, I think it was? This came out in 1880. Six years before Nobu Dua Lee was born. Nobu Dua Lee was trying to get us back into the consciousness of government. And you can't have a government unless you understood your nationality. You can't understand your nationality unless you go back to the divine side and start understanding your ancient mothers and fathers. What's happening? What did AMPAC do? We followed well-settled principles, understanding the prophet, as well as studying international law. Watch this. "Right of Protections in Morocco, 1880, Article 15." Mother, can you read this for me, please?
"Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall have, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization, heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country, shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction."
Okay. So what did AMPAC do? Remember, AMPAC's trying to be a beacon. Beacon on behalf of what? Statehood. AMPAC is trying to teach classes based upon statehood, a specialty on statehood, okay? What's happening? Article 15. "Any subject of Morocco", did it say "any citizen"? Because they're talking about Moors right here. Said "any subject", they refer to Moors as subjects and proteges. The only time they refer to Moors as being citizens is because some Moors have decided to be citizens. But guess what? If a Moor says he's a citizen, did he get permission from a Moroccan government to be a citizen in the United States? Only Moors can answer that question. Show us the material fact that you got something from a Moroccan government that says you can be a naturalized citizen. That's how you settle that. Let's learn about it. "Any subject of Morocco, i.e. Moor, who's been conquered, any Moor, any conquered Moor, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization", what's happening? Listen, Moors. It says what? "Moors shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization", so what did AMPAC do? What do we do? We returned to Morocco. We returned to Morocco, how? Abstract. Most Moors have returned to Morocco from an abstract perspective. They're metaphysical, right? A mental exercise, a spiritual exercise. But once you know you've returned to Morocco mentally, what do you have to do next? Now, that's where the "and" comes in. "And, national movement with the "and", what do you have to do? Scribe a Constitution state, bylaws, three branches of government, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Listen. "Who shall return to Morocco", so AMPAC and its nationals decided to return to Morocco mentally. Then what do we have to do? Okay. "Shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission, entire submission, entire submission to the laws of the empire", let's pause right there. AMPAC submitted to the entire obligations of the empire. What does that mean? We understood both divine and national movement. That's what you call "entire". Most Moors are stuck on divine. You got to get off of divine and move forward with the national movement moving forward to put together governments. Nobu Dua Lee said he's going to lead the European here long enough to teach us governments, so what's for us to do what? Run government. He didn't teach us about government so we can turn around and help the United States of America go to and fro the earth-devouring nations? We didn't, we're not learning government to learn how to help keep him in power. It's supposed so that we can get our own governments back. Listen, Moors. Here's the next step. "And the obligation to quit Morocco", so wait a minute. So Moors have an obligation to quit Morocco? Well, how do you quit Morocco? How do you quit Morocco? Meaning, how do you become an expatriate of Morocco? How do you denationalize yourself? How do you denationalize yourself? How do you do it? Okay, here's how you do it. "Unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country", who's a foreign country? The United States of America and the United States. The foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. So how do you quit Morocco? Well, you got to get consent from the government of Morocco. And until then, you are not a citizen of the United States and you're not a citizen of Morocco until you get permission, consent from a Moroccan government to even be a citizen of the United States. So you a citizen of the United States? Or you a citizen of Morocco? Prove it, where's the material fact? That a Moroccan government gave you permission to remain naturalized. Let's continue. "Foreign naturalization, heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction", so what's happening? Bylaws of each country. Wait a minute. Each country. Laws of each country. Each country? Well, it must be two or more countries that they're talking about. Two? Each country. Must be two countries they're talking about in Article 15. So, what two countries each country they're talking about? The United States of America and Morocco. They tell you about all this Morocco up here, then they say each country. Which, who's each country? The country you're naturalized in or the country of Morocco that you must come back and consent to the Moroccan government. Okay, Moors. So therefore, once you come back into the consciousness of you being a national and no longer branded as a citizen, because you were never a citizen, you were branded a citizen, and just because you're branded a citizen, don't make that who you are. So what happens? "Shall be continued to them", what's, 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 what's the "shall be continued to them"? What are we talking about? What are we talking about? "Foreign naturalization, heretofore acquired by subjects, Moors, of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country", so the law of what? Morocco. Because it's each country, okay? Which country you going to choose, Moor? Because you have a right to your self-determination. So which country you going to choose? You choosing Morocco? Okay, so once you choose Morocco, what happens? "Shall be continued to them", what? The law of Morocco as regards all its effects without any restrictions. Moors don't have restrictions when they have divine and national movement. But you have restrictions when you're just stuck on divine without the national. What does national mean? Political status. All Moors have to correct their status. This is what this is all about. Correcting your status, your political status. Through what? Your Constitution, your state, your bylaws. That's what this is all about. You got to consent, one way or another. Consent to being what? A national, we're talking politics, or remain as naturalized. Either way, you got to come and consent. Have Moors done that? Let's continue. Alright. Now, in Class 35, I kept saying, we're going to look up the definition of "estate". Well, we've already done that once, so this is redundant, right? Estate, right? So when we looked up estate, mother, can you just read this first part of estate for me, please?
Estate. The interest which anyone has in lands or in any other subject of property.
Alright, thank you, mother. So estate is about what? Estate is about what? Land, right? Soil, dominion. Alodium, alodium land of the Moors, the sovereigns, the true sovereigns of the land, the indigenous people of the land, right? So what do they tell you also about estate? Always remember that the colonists always slide in there'd be factual language, right? Okay, here we go.
There is no such legal entity as an estate.
Thank you, mother. "There is no such legal entity as an estate." Moors cannot claim the estate under the guise of Admiralty Law, charters, or 501(c)(3), because all that's connected to what? Legal entities. Young Moors, please, go study. Don't be in fellowship, be in scholarship. Okay, so we're talking estate of natural people, organic people, organic law. What is organic law? That's nature's law, mother's law, common law, jurisprudence, right? So... If you're talking Constitution, what's the definition of Constitution, mother, please?
"The organic and fundamental law of a nation or state, which may be written or unwritten, establishing the character and conception of its government, laying the basic principles to which its internal life is to be conformed, organizing the government, and regulating, distributing, and limiting the functions of its different departments, and prescribing the extent and manner of the exercise of sovereign powers, a charter of government deriving its whole authority from the government."
Alright, from the government. Okay, alright, here we go, Moors. Here we go, Moors, thank you, mother. Constitution. "Constitution, the organic and fundamental law of a nation or state", so Moors in the state before they can talk Constitution. Constitution of state, state is a constitution which may be written or unwritten, what is it established? Establishing the character and conception of its government. Moors play the god government, okay? You got Constitution, you got state. Does your state have a seal? Does your state have an alodium flag that represents its jurisdiction? Do you have an open allegiance to said state? And if your state was restored by a matriarch? Because only a state can be restored by meteors. Continuing. "Laying the basic principles to which its internal life is to be conformed", so there's your meteors. The meteors coming right here. "Laying the basic principles to which its internal life", who creates internal life? Meteors. "Is to be conformed", organizing the government. That's when you get into "organized", you're organizing the government based upon who? Organic people, not persons. Let's continue. "And regulating, distributing, and limiting the functions of its different departments and prescribing the extent and manner of the exercise of sovereign..." and prescribing the extent and manner of the exercise of sovereign powers. Moors want their sovereign powers back? Your sovereign powers, your sovereign powers comes through what? It comes through the state. But the state needs a constitution. Your sovereign powers don't come from just you expressing that you're a Moore. Your sovereign power comes through the state and is protected by the constitution, the constitution of mother. Only the mother can protect your sovereignty. That must be understood, Moors. Now, listen. Right here, it says, a charter of government deriving its whole authority from the governed. What's that mean? I told you in Class thirty-five, we'll get to this last sentence. A charter of government deriving its whole authority from the governed. Only the governed people, the people, right? We're talking constitution for people, organic. So, the governed, we the people, we the people can always put together a charter if we want a charter. And we're using it in a positive way. A charter is a good thing. The word charter is not a bad word. It's how you're using it, what's the intent? And you can't tell people their sovereignty comes through a charter. That's connotative linguistics. That's not the truth. That's fraud. However, if the people governed, governed people of a government decide to put together a charter of sorts, that charter better be positive, such as the Charter of the United Nations. We'll talk about that later on, because the Charter of the United Nations outlines what is their delegation of authority. They tell you straight up, they're just an organization. There's not claiming to be a state and they're not claiming any jurisdiction over the people. The United Nations Charter is all about them basically being an H R department for compliance to help with disputes between states. And the United Nations Charter was put together by the governed. Who the governed? All the states around the world put together the United Nations Charter. We're talking about that, alright? Okay, let's continue. Okay. What is a state? We've been on this before. State, right? State. Now, we get into the noun. Because a state verb is your state of mind. That's divine. Now, you have to get in state. Now, now you have to create it, okay? Now, you have to restore it. Let's go. Mother, if you can read state now?
A people permanently occupying a fixed territory bound together by common law, habits, and custom into one body politic exercising through the medium of an organized government independent sovereignty and control over all persons and things within its boundaries, capable of making war and peace and of entering into international relations with other communities of the globe.
Alright, thank you, Mother. So, what's happening? What's a state? State is noun. State is people. Organic law for people. That's why they tell you off the top, it's for people, not persons. Moors claim to say they have a state under admiralty law, five oh one C three and charters? That's for persons. That's connotative linguistics. That's fraud. Like I said, the word state is not a bad word. See, we as Moors been talking about the local statutes of the states of all caps, that we think the word state is a bad word. So, we haven't been studying the word state. Because we see the word state is a bad word. Not recognizing that the word state is just a word. You don't blame the word state, you blame the administrators of the state. So, understand, state now, a people permanently occupy a fixed territory, okay? Now, you have to understand how the colonists talk. They use choice language, okay? So, therefore, when you read the definition of state, it's positive and negative. You have to be able to make the distinction about what's going on, okay? Listen to me. A people, so they tell you, the people is about the state, not persons. Say, permanently occupying a fixed territory. So, we know we have jurisdiction, right? Under jurisprudence. But territory isn't a bad word. So, we define territory as being something organic, okay? Bound together by common law. Now, you see this word common law, Moors? You see that hyphen? That's where they try to slide in what they call the feudal law. So, when Moors write the word common law, remove the hyphen, write as two separate words. As soon as you write down common law with the hyphen, now you're talking about the jurisdiction of the colonists, i.e. feudal law. Under them, what they call the modern rule is the common law for the colonists. So, they try to slide this in, you see? Y'all just have to know how they're talking, alright? So, let's start all over. A people permanently occupying a fixed territory. Why is that important? In NPAC's constitution, we have a fixed territory. These are the obligations. Moors can't claim they got a government and haven't even now outlined the dominions. That's called connotative linguistics. That's your abstract and not the state of facts, not the facts of your state. You must have dominions outlined, Moors. Okay, let's continue. Fixed territory bound together by common law, habits, and customs into one body politic exercising through the medium of an organized government. Organized for who? People, not persons. Independent sovereignty. Moors want independent sovereignty, then you need a constitution. A constitution puts together the state. You want your sovereignty, Moors? You need a state. Restore the states. Your independent sovereignty and control over all persons. Now, remember now, it's persons, persons. So, we're talking what? Natural persons or we're talking persons artificial? Right? We're talking persons. When Moors are talking, when we say persons by itself, standalone word, that's artificial. If you say natural persons or human persons, now you're adding consanguinity to it. You're adding blood to it. You're bringing it back into a human being's status instead of just human. Alright? Moors have to go back and study to understand these things. And things within its boundaries. Capable of making war and peace and of entering into international relations with other communities of the globe. So, what's happening? A state can interface with other states around the world. So, when Moors start to restore the states, we can start to interface with other Moore states. NPAC as a state would recognize another Moore state that's organic. That other Moore's organic state can recognize NPAC. We get into international relations. That's how this works, alright? Okay, let's continue. Okay, Moors. Up here, I have an image of NPAC's nationality card. Why are we talking about this? Because Noam Choralee said it's a divine and national movement. This is a public nationality card, okay? Now, why are we talking about this? We're talking about this because most Moors are walking around with a nationality card that says, Moors American. Moors American. America's a continent. We must start now getting into what's called the national movement and nationalize through our states. And our states provide us with our nationality card. This is the next level, Moors. We're going from ground zero and now we're starting to grow, okay? Noam Choralee had to get us from a negative status, try to get us back to ground zero. Tachry Bay is trying to take us from ground zero, taking us at least one floor. Us Moors now they got, got to now establish the second floor and keep going. We're building up. We're increasing our level of degrees. What's happening? First things first, we have the Moroccan Empire flag to the left. We have our state flag to the right. All flags to the left are the superior position. Flags to the right are subordinate to the flag on the left. Why am I pointing that out? You got a lot of unfortunately, Moors organizations out there who put the United States of America's flag to the left and they put the Moroccan flag to the right. What are they saying? They're saying the Moroccan flag is subordinate to the United States of America flag. Young Moors, please go do some research on it relates to what's flags. Do you put flags to the left? You put flags to the right. Do some research, young Moors. And quickly, you'll start be able to ask your leader, guys, why do we have the United States of America's flag to the left and the Moroccan flag to the right? If in fact that means our Moroccan flag is subordinate to the United States? Can you answer that question for me? See what answer you get. So, we're in proper status. Our state flag is subordinate to Mother Earth's flag, alright? Okay, Moors national. Moors national. It doesn't say Moors American. Noam Choralee said this, this was a divine and national movement. Moors national, okay? A lodio identi- a lodio identification card, allegiance and oath to a lodium Moors Pariah Anticolorum, our state. Once you pledge your allegiance to the state, now the state now pledges allegiance to you to protect you under those bylaws. Right here, provincial state government under the sovereignty of the Moroccan Empire, right? So, we're claiming that our state is a part of the sovereignty of the Moroccan Empire and that's the Moroccan Empire flag, alright? We have our own national I D number, Kanye Shobey, which is our consul general of NPAC who is not self-appointed. Got his born date, in case y'all wanna send him a born day card. He, he loves born day cards. I can tell you that right now. He loves it, he loves it. He somewhere celebrating right now. Like even his born day, yeah, he's talking about his birthday already. Alright, let's continue. Alright, care of. This right here is NPAC's tentative, tentative capital address. But what's most important on here, Moors? One of the most important things. Latitude longitude, right here, Moors. See, Moors get caught up in all this address talk. You won't be talking about that so much if you had your latitude longitude. We're talking geographically speaking of the estate, not the corporate state. Your a lodio, a lodium state right here. Latitude longitude for this particular address. Watch this, boy, let me give you an example. This is five oh one South Cherry Street. Moors get all caught up, should you spell the street? Should it be all caps? It's irrelevant. Why? It's just a building. This building could be torn down and turned into apartments and have a totally different address, but guess what won't change? The latitude longitude of our state. Soon as you create your constitution, Moors are already claiming everything that's corporal and incorporeal within the boundaries of our state anyway. But what are we claiming? The land. Latitude longitude, alright? So, as you can see, we got a thumbprint, hair, eyes, height, weight. Okay, as you can see, Kanye Shobey is six, six, two forty. Alright, he loves to talk about that, alright? Okay, so, as you can see, our consul general is a man of, of big stature, but he has an even bigger heart. I want to say that about the consul general. Thank you very much, Kanye Shobey. Alright, what's the back of our card look like? Okay. Here's the back of our card. Okay. As you can see, Moroccan flag to the left, state flag to the right, Aboriginal indigenous autarchanist on the land of northwest of Mexico, North America. The bearer of this I D card is not a United States citizen. Pursuant to treaty of peace and friendship between Morocco and the United States of America seventeen eighty-six, seventeen eighty-seven, and eighteen thirty-six, alright? So, what is this eight stack four eight four, T S two four four dash two nine beben twelve eighty-six? What is that? That's letting the policy enforcers who are looking at your card, this is the United States codified language. That way, they understand through their state department, they've already put on a record this codified language that says the treaty is enforced. So, if they're looking this up and they put that into their system, they'll see the treaty of peace and friendship. What's next? The law restitution, I mean, excuse me, restoration. As you see, we got a typo there, we need to fix that. Keep in mind, our nationality card is like nationality card, uh, one point O. Alright, we'll make, we'll make corrections on here as we go. But this is a good demonstration for all Moors out there who are learning how to get into statehood. This is the basics, the fundamentals that we should start leaning towards, okay? So, we've got the law restoration, which is the constitution for a lodio Moors Pariah Anticolorum. What's next? The U N declaration on the rights of indigenous people. This is the codified language that you receive through the United Nations. That's their codified language. When you put that number in right there, United Nations Declaration of Rights Indigenous People will come up. And last but not least, constant notification access, alright? Now, look at the order we put this in, Moors. Our delegation authority order starts with treaty, right? But the people put together treaties, the treaty they put together the people. But where enforcement was called the politics. The politics is the treaty. Then we put our constitution second, right? Because the treaty is about the empire. Our constitution about our state, latitude longitude. Then we start talking about the United Nations Declaration of Rights Indigenous People, third. And then fourth, we deal with constant notification and access. And for the record, Moors, when you put together your state, the next level of your competency is to put together your own constant notification and access manual. You see Moors all the time pointing out constant notification access of the state department of the United States trying to enforce their constant notification access. Moors need to put together our own manual to tell the colonists what our instructions is in terms of how they deal with us in Morocco. Send it to them as a notice. They need to adopt it and make it a part of their bylaws. If they don't, they entitled to their self-determination, but there's also going to be what's called legal ramifications if they don't. So, Moors, as you start building up, at some point, we'll stop talking about their constant notification access and we'll be talking about our own through our own manuals, through our states, okay? So, I think I had a I D card, I D. So, you can see, Moors, just real quick, this is, uh, Kanye Shobey's nationality card in real time. Right, I know it's probably hard to see that for our subscribers. There on the back, we have the rest of the information, okay? So, this is what you call tangible, right? This is a state of fact. Is the fact of our state is our nationality card. Noam Choralee first started bringing the nationality card into existence. Why? To bring the people back into consciousness. Now, you're looking at websites such as R V Bay Publications. That's an excellent exercise in bringing the people back into consciousness of nationality. Understanding you're a Moors American, that is a fact. But now you have to increase your level of degrees and now have a nationality card that represents your state based upon your permanent jurisdiction. That's the next level, Moors, okay? We're talking about that some more another time. Alright. Let's get into a little bit of international law. That's what all Moors must study. I'm gonna replace the word with must and say shall. All Moors shall study international law. Now, that's not a command from me, but guess what? Noam Choralee said, man know thyself. In order to know thyself, you must study divine and national movement. What's the national movement? International law. Alright, so, Moors, in, in terms of you having a study guide, you can go look this information up on Google. It's the twenty eleven treaty event towards universal particip- participation and implementation, alright? Which is fact sheet number one, alright? Which outlines a little bit about international, it's Michael, international is about questionnaire, okay? But you can find a lot of information about this. This is one of the United Nations seals, because they got a lot of departments, alright? That's just one of their seals. Okay, let's go. Alright, Mother, if you can read this for me, please?
Okay. Towards twenty eleven treaty event, towards a universal participation and implementation. Understanding international law. What is international law? International law is the law governing relations between states. What are the benefits of international law? Without it, there could be chaos. International law sets up a framework based on states as the principal actors in the international legal system. It defines the state's legal responsibilities in their conduct with each other within state's boundaries and in their treatment of individuals. International law encompasses many areas, including human rights, disarmament, transnational organized crime, refugees. Refugees, migration, statelessness, the treatment of prisoners, the use of force, the conduct of war. The environment, sustainable development, the oceans, outer space, global communications, and world trade.
Thank you mother. Listen Morse, especially young Moris. Understanding international law, young Moris. What is international law? International law is the law governing relations between states, not individuals. The individual people, Moris, must pledge allegiance and consent to a Moroccan government. The Moroccan government is your state, your state protects your sovereignty, your sovereignty comes through the state. That's international law. How do you protect your sovereignty? State, that's international law. What are the benefits of international law, good question? Without it, there could be chaos, guess what? Moris got a bunch of chaos going on in Morocco, don't we? Know why? Cause we ain't following international law. In international law, we would have states by now. Once we now restore the states, will we still have chaos? Yes, but it'd be minimized. We'll always have disputes, but it'd be minimized, alright? Let's continue. Without it, there could be chaos, international law sets up a framework based upon states as the principal actors in international legal systems. It defines, let me, let me try to increase the font on that if I can. Oh, too big. Okay. Without it, there could be chaos, international law sets up a framework based on states as the principal actors, so who's the principal actors Morse? The states. Not you as an individual trying to enforce a treaty, the state does it on your behalf. The state is the principal actor in the international legal system. It defines the states' legal responsibilities. In their conduct, conduct with each other within states' boundaries, see, gotta have boundaries. Permanent jurisdiction, and in their treatment of individuals. So the state, about the treatment of individuals. So United States is treating our Moris, our, our people, i.e. individuals, cause you gotta understand the more, the. International law still talks in this language, individuals, it's intermix language, okay? So our states are protected, and then we protect our people from other states infringing on our state rights. Or other states infringing on our Morse nationals of the state. International law encompasses many areas, including human rights, disarmament. Disarmament is what? Disarming the military compounds. Disarmament is about getting those military compounds out of Morocco. Cause that's how the colonists is holding on to Morocco through their military compounds. So this is disarmament, alright? That's why in the rights of indigenous people, it talks about what? Removing the military compounds, right? Demilitarizing. Transnational organized crime, to get rid of organized crime, what's organized crime? Colonists, colonial law, right? Refugees, migration, statelessness. International law takes care of statelessness, how? Cause you need a state, state takes care of the statelessness. The treatment of prisoners. How do you treat prisoners? Moris got a lot of Iraqi folks locked up in prison camps, how do you deal with that Morse? You deal with it with international law. What's international law? States. States are what? The principal actor to protect what? The rights of our nationals who are dealing with what? The treatment of imprisonment, internment, internment, internment camps. The use of force, our state deals with use of force. The conduct of war, the environment, sustainable development, the oceans, outer space, global communications, and world trade. Listen how they talk, what's oceans? Sea, right? What's outer space? Air rights, right? Global communications, right? So what are they talking about? That's your water, that's your air, and globe is what? Land. See how they spelled it backwards? Land, air. Water, law. International law deals with law. And then you get into trade. See how they put trade last? It's about reigning in the order of law first. Then you get into peace, then you get into prosperity. This is very important for Moris to understand. Okay mother.
With so much conflict in the world, how can this really work? International law, law does work at times invisibly and yet successfully. World trade and the global economy depend on international rule, which regulate. The activities required to conduct business across borders, including financial institutions, transportation of goods, and the exploitation of natural resources. There are treaties for roads, airspace, and bodies of water. And as new needs arise, whether to prevent or punish terrorist acts or to regulate e-commerce, new treaties are being developed.
Okay, thank you mother. Down a little bit. With so much conflict in the world, how can this really work? What work, international law and states? International law does work at times invisibly and yet successfully. World trade and global, global economy depend on international rule, which regulate the activities required to conduct business across borders. Including financial institution, transportation of goods, and the ex- exploitation, ex. Yeah, exploitation of natural resources. There are treaties for roads, airspace, and bodies of water, then they just repeat law again? And as new needs arise, whether to prevent or punish terrorist acts or to regulate e-commerce, new treaties are being developed. But who can put together a treaty and enforce a treaty? Only the states. Okay mother, can you read this part?
Does international treaty law impinge on a nation's sovereignty?
Good question.
To become party to a treaty, a state must express through a concrete act its willingness to undertake the legal rights. And obligations contained in the treaty. It must consent quote, consent to be bound unquote by the treaty.
Okay Morse, this is the most important part I really want the young Moris to see. Moris been out there trying to enforce the constitution and Moris been out there trying to enforce treaties and. Moris been out there trying to enforce the rights of indigenous peoples, guess what? You can't do it according to international law, why? Let's read it. To become party to a treaty, listen. A state must express. Through a concrete act, what's the concrete act? Through your legislative branch, it must accede, accession to the treaty, constitution. Declarations and conventions, its willingness to undertake the legal rights and obligations contained in the treaty. Listen, young Moris, it must consent to be bound by the treaty. What must consent to be bound by the treaty? The state must be bound. Moris cannot enforce treaties. Moris cannot enforce constitutions, declarations, or conventions, only the state can do that, through the sovereignty of the state. Now, once you're a Morse national through the state, can you invoke treaties, declarations, conventions, et cetera? Yes, but you do that with who? Your governing body. Who now represents you or precedes you. But you can't be an individual out there invoking treaties, et cetera, without a state. And then the state must be bound to those treaties. That's why Ampac tried to impress upon the Moris to understand. When you start looking at the status of Ampac, when you go to our website, you see what? Accession to contracts, what was that all about? We went over this. Ampac has now acceded to the treaties, all the declarations, and conventions, not all of them, but quite a few. We got about thirty-six, thirty-seven, and we continue to add more all the time, alright? Why is that? Because that's well-settled principles of international law, we don't have no choice Morse, we have no choice. Let's read it again. Does international law treaty law impinge on nation's sovereignty? To become a party to a treaty, to become a party to a treaty, to become a party to a treaty, a state must express. Through a concrete act, its willingness to undertake the legal rights and obligations contained in the treaty. It must consent to be bound by the treaty, young Moris. Okay mother.
How does a state express its consent to be bound? A state can express, express its consent to be bound by a treaty in several ways as specifically set out in the final clauses of the relevant treaty. The most common ways are definitive, signature, ratification, acceptance, approval, and accession. The terms ratification, acceptance, and approval all mean the same thing in international law. Particularly when used following signature subject to blank. The state has agreed to become party and is willing to undertake the legal rights. And obligations contained in the treaty upon its treaty into force, entry into force. Signing a treaty is one of the most common steps in the process of becoming party to a treaty. However, simply signing a treaty does not usually make a state a party, although in some cases called definitive signature, it might. A state does not take on any positive legal obligations under the treaty upon signature. Signing a treaty does however indicate the state's intention to take steps to express its consent to be. Bound by the treaty at a later date. Signature also creates an obligation on a state in the period between signature and ratification, acceptance, or approval. To refrain in good faith from acts that would defeat the object and purpose of the treaty.
Thank you mother, alright, let's go back and read, comprehend, use some forensics, some discernment on what we just read. How does a state express its consent to be bound? So young Moris, the state must be bound to the treaties. Let's learn a little bit more about what they're talking about. A state can express its consent to be bound by a treaty in several ways, here's the ways. As specially set out in the final clause of the relevant treaty, the most common ways are definitive signature, ratification. Acceptance and approval and accession. You see that Morse? Do you understand now why Ampac acceded through accession of these contracts were following international law instructions? The terms ratification, acceptance, approval, all mean the same thing in international law. Particularly when used following signature subject to. Signature subject to. Signature subject to, what does that mean? That means the signature of the state such as Ampac state. Our signature made us subject to what? The acceptance of all the treaties, all of the conventions, all the declarations. Including the Charter of the United Nations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, okay? Our signature made us bound to those treaties. Listen Morse, the state has agreed to become party. I'll say it again, the state has agreed to become a party. I'll say it again, the state has agreed to become a party, not the individuals. The state enforces the treaty. The state is the party. The state is the party and is willing to undertake the legal rights and obligations contained in the treaty upon its entry into force. What are they trying to say? The treaty is not enforced until you are bound to it through the state. These are the instructions Morse. Signing a treaty is one of the most common steps in the process of becoming party to a treaty. That's how you become party to a treaty, you can sign the actual treaty. But listen, however. However, let's learn about however, let's start all over. Signing a treaty is one of the most common steps in the process of becoming a party to a treaty, however. Simply signing a treaty does not usually make a state a party. Wait, that don't make sense. So you sign it, still don't make you a party, let's find out why. Although in some cases called definitive signature, it might. A state does not take on any positive legal obligation under the treaty upon signature. But when does it? Signing a treaty does however indicate the state's intention to take steps to express it, express its consent, so what's happening? It's calling good faith, when you sign a treaty, that's in good faith. When do you have obligation? They'll tell you next. So okay. However, indicate the state's intention to take steps to express its consent to be bound by the treaty at a later date. Why they say in a later date, we gonna learn why. Signature also creates an obligation on the state in the period between signature and ratification. Acceptance or approval to re- to refrain in good faith from acts that would defeat the object and purpose of the treaty, what's that mean? Even if we sign the treaty, it means absolutely nothing until now you bring it back to your local state. And now, through the acceptance, acceptance and accession and acceding to said treaty, declaration, or convention through your state. Your state becomes bound to it. Until then, it's just in good faith. Moris have to understand this, Moris out there thinking they can enforce all these treaties and constitution and declaration and conventions, and you cannot. Until you accede to it through your state, on the record, for the record of your state. Then you are bound to it and you can hold other states bound to it as well. That's international law. This is the next level, my degrees. Okay mother.
Multilateral treaties contain terms that indicate where the treaty is to be available physically for signing and for what period of time. Multilateral treaties often provide that they will be quote, open for signature unquote. Only until a specified date, after which signature will no longer be possible. Once a treaty is closed for signature, a state generally may become a party to it by means of accession. Some multilateral treaties are open for signature indefinitely. Most multilateral treaties on human rights issues fall into this category. Such as the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women nineteen seventy-nine. The International Covenant on Civil Rights, Civil and Political Rights nineteen sixty-six. And the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination nineteen sixty-six.
Alright, thank you mother, so what's happening here Morse? There's that word accession again, accession of what? Multilateral treaties, okay? So we're talking bilateral treaties, multilateral treaties, multilateral conventions, multilateral decorations. Multilateral treaties, declarations, and conventions, you must still have an accession through your state. Your matriarchal council, the legislative branch must sign these laws, these contracts into your local state's government to be bound by it. Mother.
Oh, I'm sorry. How are treaties enforced? There is no overarching compulsory judicial system or coercive penal system to address breaches of the provisions set out in treaties. Or to settle disputes. That is not to say that there are no tribunals in the international legal system. For example, the Charter of the United Nations established the International Court of Justice. The principal judicial organ of the UN as a means by which member states may settle their disputes peacefully. in accordance with international law. The court can also give advisory opinions on legal questions referred to it by duly authorized international organs and agencies. Member states of the United Nations in cases to which they are parties are obliged to abide by the court's decisions. However, before a case can go before the court, a state must have accepted the jurisdiction of the court, either in general or in relation to a specific case. A court, a state that has not accepted the court's jurisdiction cannot be forced to appear before the International Court of Justice. States may also entrust the settlement of specific disagreements to other international dispute resolution mechanisms established by treaties such as the International Tribunal for the Law of the Sea, the Permanent Court of Arbitration, and the dispute settlement bodies of the World Trade Organization, among others. Different treaties may also create different treaty body regimes to encourage the parties to abide by their obligations and undertake actions acquired for compliance. For instance, the Human Rights Committee monitors the implementation of the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights. The Committee on the Elimination of Racial Discrimination monitors implementation of the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination. And the Committee Against Torture monitors implementation of the Convention Against Torture and other cruel, inhumane, or degrading treatment.
Thank you, Mo. Let's start right there. What are we reading about right now? Now they're letting you know where some of the obligations of. How are treaties enforced? How do you enforce a treaty? That's the question. The Moors been trying to enforce treaties, but to no avail. What does that mean? We haven't seen the results of us trying to enforce the treaties. So how are treaties enforced? Well, first way you enforce it, you need a state. Constitution, seal, flag, and oath and allegiance to said state. What do you need after that? Now you must accede to the treaty. Once you accede to the treaty, now you enforce treaty. How do you enforce treaty? Through the state and council court. If council court does not prevail because the other state is still encroaching upon your state territorial rights, then what do you do next? Now you take it to the United Nations, United Nations Secretary General, right? Then, after that, you can take it to the ICJ. If in fact, the two disputing states can't come to a settlement, what's next? The ICJ. So they explaining all of that here, what the remedies on how to enforce a treaty is council court, and then the U.N. dealing with the Secretary General and the ICJ. But what is the U.N.? What are they really? What they tell you right here? The U.N. is a human rights committee. At our jobs, we have this thing called H.R., Human Resources, right? The U.N. is a human rights committee. What does that mean? Human rights, human resources. The U.N. is only acting as an H.R. department to maintain the compliance between state disputes. The U.N. and United Nations Charter, the Charter of the United Nations, is not claiming any jurisdiction over any state. As a matter of fact, the Moors states have to go to U.N. and have the U.N. now come in now perform an investigation that we had a dispute with the United States, and this is a Moors state. We have to petition the U.N. to come in and get involved as a third-party referee. That's all the H.R. department is, is a referee. So how do we enforce our treaties? We need referees. We need council court as a referee, and when that does not prevail, now we must petition the U.N. to come in as a referee as well. An international referee. That's all the U.N. is, all right?
Wait a minute, I'm trying to write something down.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, let's read that last paragraph.
The Security Council can also adopt, under Chapter Seven, measures to enforce its decisions regarding threats to international peace and security, breaches of the peace, or acts of aggression. Such measures may include sanctions or authorizing the use of force.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's a little bit, I just wanted to give the Moors, especially the young Moors, an opportunity to understand more about understanding international law.
Wait a minute.
Moors have to go back and research. We have to stop being in fellowship. We gotta be in scholarship and go back and study. Noah Draw Lee said, "Man, know thyself." You gotta study, study, study. All right?
No, I'm trying to write that down, the title. Is it under that or twenty-eleven treaty event?
Well, that's the title.
Towards universal participation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to write down.
Okay.
Towards universal. Okay.
All right, let's continue. Okay, Moors. We've gone over this before, but I think it's really good in terms of what we just read about international law, right? This is the International Court of Justice Handbook. Moors can go look this up, okay? Why are we going over this? Because of what we just read about international law. What is international law about? It's about states, right? Okay. Okay, Moors. So, on this same handbook, under what they call forward, right? Hopefully, Moors can see that at home. Forward. Forward, the role of International Court of Justice, the ICJ, which has its seat in the hay Netherlands, is to settle in accordance with international law disputes submitted to it by states. That's what Moors have to understand. When you have a dispute with the colonies, what are there several states, municipal corporation states, you have a Moors state. How do you deal with that dispute? Okay, council court. When council court does not prevail, you do what now? Now you bring that state dispute to the United Nations, Secretary General, and the ICJ. But who can bring a dispute to the ICJ? Only states. Moors have to understand the reason why the United Nations has not been able to come in to help Moors because Moors didn't have a state. Once Moors now restore the states, now the United Nations will allow Moors to now petition the United Nations to help secure the rights of our states. We read this before, let's be redone. This is Section Three of the handbook. Number three, the parties. Who are the parties? Who can be parties? Only states may be parties to cases before the court. What court? The ICJ. Moors need a referee to deal with this belligerent municipal corporation called the United States, and their fifty franchisees called the several states. So Moors can keep fighting the United States in an alley with no referee, or we can fight them through our pen in an organized, organized fashion through the United Nations Secretary General or the ICJ that has referees that are judges, fifteen of them at the ICJ as referees. Moors gotta choose. We gotta write to our self-determination, but we gotta choose a determination. The parties, only states may be parties to cases before the court. It is the function of the ICJ to decide in accordance with the international law disputes of a legal nature that are submitted to it by states. Let's continue. This right here is the rights of indigenous peoples, indigenous peoples, indigenous peoples, not persons. You gotta see how the U.N. writes. So you wanna be indigenous peoples, Moors? Y'all wanna be peoples again? Because they have it branded as persons. Here's what you need to understand. The rights of indigenous people. Did you know the rights indigenous people list the word state forty times? I had to go back and count it. Forty times. They list the word state five times in the annex, the preamble, five times. They list the word state thirty-five times in the articles. It's number forty-six articles. They mention the word state thirty-five times, and guess what? Moors read this all the time, and the word state goes right over our face. The word state goes right over our turd. We never focusing on the word state. Why? Because we think the word state has something applied to the United States. We think it's their obligation. No, it's our obligation. Let me prove it to you. Two things I'm gonna prove to you, really three, because I'm gonna prove to you that the word state is in here several times, but you gonna go back and read it yourself and count how many times it says state. So you go back and prove that forty times. What's the second thing I'm gonna prove? That even the United Nation has to adopt the declaration. They wrote it. Then they have to put it through their bylaws, through their Security Council, have to now take the document and put it through the Security Council. Because even though they signed it, it was only in good faith. Then they have to turn around and adopt it through the council, and Moors have to do the same thing. We have to now make sure we're doing the same thing international law does, United Nations, okay? Mo, could you read this for me? I'm gonna show you exactly what they did, starting here.
United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, the General Assembly, taking note of the recommendation of the Human Rights Council contained in its Resolution one half, one slash two of twenty-nine June two thousand six, by which the Council adopted the text of the U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples.
Stop there. You see what happened, Moors? What happened? The Council adopted the text. They wrote it, and they still had to turn around and adopt it. Why? They followed well set of principles, the rules they set forth for all the states? The U.N. has to follow the same rules. They have to adopt it through the council, all right? All right, let's read this next sentence.
Recalling its Resolution sixty-one slash one seventy-eight of twenty December two thousand six, by which it decided to defer consideration of an action on the declaration to allow time for further consultations thereon, and also decided to conclude its consideration before the end of the sixty-first session of the General Assembly, adopts the U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples as contained in the annex to the present resolution, hundred and seventh plenary meeting, thirteenth September two thousand seven.
Okay, so the United Nations Declaration was what? Adopted. Moors have to adopt all declarations, conventions, treaties, and any other bylaw through your state. Even the United Nations had to do it. Listen, Mo. Why do I always tell the Moors, "You have no choice but to read the preamble and the annex of all declarations, conventions, treaties, and constitutions. You must read it." Here's why you must read it. Moors skip right over this and go right into the articles. Look what they're missing. Read this for me, Mo, please.
Guided by the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations and good faith in the fulfillment of the obligations assumed by states in accordance with the Charter.
Stop. Most Moors skip right over that. It's giving you the consciousness and the context of why they're writing the rights of indigenous peoples for what? Listen, guided by the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations and good faith in the fulfillment and obligation assumed by states. Indigenous people want their rights. Okay, indigenous people, y'all got fulfillment and obligations assumed by states. We need states. Most Moors skip right over this. We're guided by what? States. What else we guided by? The principles of the Charter of the United Nations. If you go and read the Charter of the United Nations, which we will, they talk about this for indigenous people, Article seventy-three. Okay, we'll go down real quick. Okay, right here, Mo, recognizing.
Recognizing also the urgent need to respect and promote the rights of indigenous peoples affirmed in treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements with states.
Okay, stop. You see how Moors have to read? The rights indigenous people not gonna say, "Okay, you Moors, y'all need a state." They expect us to be competent. We wanna govern ourselves. They expect us to be competent and understand and comprehend what's being said. Recognizing also the urgent need to respect and promote the rights indigenous people affirmed in treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements with states. So how do we now respect and promote our rights? Promote our rights through what? States. You wanna enforce the treaties? You need states. Moors gotta understand this. Let's go to Article Five. Moors gotta go back and read this annex. It's very important to understand. It talks about states. It mentions states five times, five times. Let's go to Article Five. Article Five. Mo, if you can read that.
Indigenous peoples have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully if they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state.
They tell you right off the top. In the Five, Article Five, love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. Moors love talking about the five principles. Let's talk about the five principles that the United Nations is trying to point out to Moors. What are they trying to point out to us? Check it out. You indigenous Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, that's distincts, politics, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully if they so choose. If they so choose to do what? Choose to do what? Be a part of what? To restore what? The political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state. They tell you right there. Moors. Tajri Bay said, "The problem is our status." Tajri Bay said, "The problem is people can't read, and those that can read won't." What is the definition of read? To comprehend, forensics, discernment. Moors been reading this since two thousand seven. It's been fourteen years, and we have not restored the states. Watch this, talking Five, listen. Political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions. One, two, three, four, five. Then they repeat themselves. If you choose to put Then they repeat themselves. If you choose to put together a state, this is what the state gonna do. It's gonna protect what? Political, economic, social, and cultural life. What is that? One, two, three, four, five. They're talking to the Moors. The Moors are the only ones in Morocco that can stop this belligerent municipal corporation that's going to and through the earth devouring other nations. Only the Moors can stop this mayhem. They know it. Moors got to get back to states. We have to restore the states based upon our indigenous mothers and fathers. The Iroquois Confederation, the five to six families. Those five to six families were representing the other nation states. Once Moors come back to a collective, give you an example as we start to close out. Once Moors start to restore the states, we can create an alliance amongst ourselves. Once we fill up all these jurisdictions with Moors states everywhere, we can put together a national alliance of a national government to help us secure the rights of all the Moors states. But we'll never get to that point if we only start with what's called organic states first, according to international law, for the people. Now, as I start to close, I'm gonna briefly go through this. Briefly. Justice delayed is justice denied. We're talking about Moors nationals or stateless Moors. We're talking about capitulation regime if you're stateless. You're capitulating to be stateless. What are we talking about? On this side of the equation is Moors nationals over state. This side of the equation is Moors who are stateless. You're talking de de jour? That's true. Or you're talking de facto of fact, but is it true? Well, you say you're the Sultan, but is it true? No. You say you can enforce a treaty, but is that true? No. We're talking nation's law versus patriarchal law, which is the Vatican. That's admiralty law. We're talking common law, no hyphen, common law with a hyphen, that's feudal law. That's stateless Moors. You're talking constitution versus charters, which is dependency to the Vatican. You're talking jurisprudence, or you're talking admiralty ships, which is stateless Moors. You're talking organic law versus persons, which is artificial? You're talking a lodeo versus citizens or naturalized? You're talking state, which is jurisdiction, or you being stateless? Are you talking permanent jurisdiction, or are you stateless? Are you, do you have elected officials, or are you self-appointed? Do you have three branches of government, or are you just simply stateless? Listen. Moors nationals do not register with the de facto state. What am I talking about? Moors nationals don't put on the register with the secretary state or the de facto state. When you keep putting stuff on the register, you're saying that they're sorry, that you need their permission, that you depend upon them to give you permission to do what you do. Moors nationals don't put nothing on the record with the de facto states. We give them notice of our status. That's it. Then they're entitled to their self-determination of whether they're gonna adopt that law that we sent them. If they don't adopt it, then we just deal with the dispute in counsel court. But over here, Moors nationals don't give our documents to de facto states and tell them, "Put it on the register, please register us." We don't do that. But guess what? Stateless Moors register with de facto state. They register everything with them. Their corporations, their organizations, their admiralty status, their five oh one C threes all registered with the state of, all caps, or wherever they are. Meaning they're calling those people the sovereign, giving them permission to have mobility. Moors nationals have no admiralty or five oh one C three organizations, et cetera. We don't have that. But people that are stateless have corporations, and they claim their sovereignty is through a corporation. So Moors got to start understanding what's going on. You have to choose what status you want. Tajri Bay taught us it was status. What status do you want? You want to be a Moors national of your state? Or you want to be a stateless Moors through capitulation regime that makes you a citizen of the United States? This makes you a ward of the state, of the United States. Wardship tenure. Moors got to understand this. Wardship tenure. Moors got to go back and do the research, okay? So, I say this in closing. We must restore Morocco. And in order for us to restore Morocco, we must restore it through the states. Our permanent latitude, longitude, through our constitution, through our three branches of government. We must be de jour. We have to follow international law. There are no shortcuts. We have to simply follow instructions. I end with that. Islam.